Council is now called to order. Everybody please rise for the opening prayer. And please remain standing for the singing of National Anthem, Provincial hymn, and the city hymn.
Okay, let us put our presence to our Creator. Au di bilan, amenisaitan na regime. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirabbilalamin. Warrahmanirrahim. Maliki yomidin. Iya kinaabudu, iya kainastain. Hidina surathel mustaqim. Sirothal ladina en amta alaihim. Bayril magdubiy alaihim mulad dalin. Amin.
Bayang magiliw, pelas na silangan. Alab ng puso sa tip tip mo'y buhay. Lupang hinirang, duyan ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupig, di ka pasisiil. Sa dagat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit mong bogaw. May dilag ang tula at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang kissnap ng watawat mo'y tagumpay na nagrihiningning. Ang bituwing nag-araw niya, kailan pa may dimangdidilim. Lupa ng araw ng walhatit pagsinta. Buhay ay langit sa piling mo. Aming ligaya na pag may mang-aapi. Ang mamatay ng dahil sayo. Oprobisya na minamahal. Sang supangan ng daba. Manwakaw na madayaw, ya naguyon niyang utaw. Malipayon kay balanggakaw ng Diyos. Mahkabayang kalupahan mo. Yang tanuma bungaun. Dagat mo mga supa, madayka yang hisga. Ka buhi anka wilihan ang kanan. Umahan na daba oriental. Langit mo mapawahi. Yang kabutayan, yang kapatagan. Maya manay magandahai. Masbiha impa kamikumatu. Kamimu ulian ikan mo. Garbu nami na daba wenyo. Yang apserbis ang katjawan mo. Bolangos, ganun pa ni. Yung yaman mo di makati. Sangkat kayang sangkat patagan. Sangkat ang katan kaway kayuwan. Magkadak yang kumajeritay. Kayang palipot na bendahan. Sangkat jawan yang sangbukan. Niyayang nyari mahal. Tagamatim matinag dadun. Tagamatim matinag urun. Yang tagamatim ang ina. Tagamatim matinag dadun. Tagamatim matinag manun. Tagamatim matinag urun. Sa Diyos labang makkadagahu. Tagamatim madayaw. Tagamatim ang ina.
Please remain standing for the councilors' creed.
Please raise your right hand. I am a Philippine councillor. Mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances. That renowned to the general welfare of my constituents. In their pursuits for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self. As the guiding principle of my official act. And I, as I trend. The pathways of local legislations. May the Almighty guide my mind and heart. That I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Okay, please sit down. We are going to dispense the vice mayor's creed considering that our vice mayor is not around. So please sit down. Kindly please call the roll.
Honorable Edmundo Pang Jr., Honorable Roelio Pabio, Honorable Sina Princess Campos, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat-Gaita, Honorable Jose Paulo Luis Rabat, Honorable Raol Antopwesto, Honorable Jerome Deng Hirang, Honorable Francisco Bardón, Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara, Honorable Edgar Valera, Honorable Daniel Makaobos, OIC Vice Mayor, Honorable Felizito Masagnay, absent excuse, Attending Coordination Meeting with Regional Director Agayo of National Commission of NCIP 11. Honorable Thomas Cibiliano, On Travel, Labo City, Attending SK Regional Task Force Meeting. Honorable Ren Solio Jerabat, on leave. Coro Mr. Chair.
For so want our rolls, in the absence of the regular presiding officer among ourselves who are going to elect. So the table now is open for nomination for our temporary presiding officer. Yes, Honorable Pabio?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I nominate Consell Tara Rabat-Gaita to our temporary presiding official of our regular session dated November 4, 2025. I do so move.
Ah, the beautiful councillor of Barangay Central is nominated. There any objection? Ah, so Honorable Tara Rabat will be our temporary presiding officer. Three minutes, recess.
Session is hereby resumed. Please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated October 28, 2025, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Honorable Campos, you are hereby recognized.
Good afternoon, everyone. I believe every member has a copy for the minutes of the previous session dated October 28, 2025, for the 17th regular session of the 8th City Council with a total of 62 pages. If there are no objections or changes to this, I move for the adoption of these said minutes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. So there is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adoption of the previous minutes dated October 28 during this 8th City Council 17th regular session. There are no corrections or discussions. The minutes is hereby adopted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For question, Madam Chair, as requested by the Honorable Campos, with the permission of the Honorable SP members, we have guests from Philippine National Police Academy. They'll just explain the details personally. And with us also, our PNP Provincial Director, Police Colonel Richie Bukol, and his Deputy Provincial Director for Administration, Police Lieutenant Colonel Carlito Pilat. And from the Philippine National Police Academy, from Silang Paglaon Class of 2026, their spokespersons, Cadet 1st Class Ensel Elijah Belloria, Hazel Ann, Cadet 1st Class Hazel Ann Laurel, from Sandika in Class of 2027, Cadet 2nd Class Jana Francis Candaza, from Sandirangan Class of 2028, Cadet 3rd Class Mark Lawrence Gundaya, and Cadet 3rd Class Minico Escalante.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, again. Madayaw na hapon sa tanan, especially to our guests this afternoon. Again, welcome to our session hall. So in order for us to cater our guests this afternoon, may I request Honorable Campos for the suspension of the house rules.
Madam Chair, to properly facilitate and welcome our guests from the PNPA and the Dopo as well. Our PD is here and the deputy is also here. I move for the suspension of the house rules, Madam Chair. I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. So there is a motion by Honorable Campos for the suspension of the house rules. Any member to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Alcantara and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none. House rules are now suspended. Again, madayaw na hapon to our guests. May I ask from our secretary as to who will be representing our guests here in the session floor?
As inform, Madam Chair, they will be represented by Cadet 1st Class Belloria and Cadet 1st Class Laurel to inform us as to the purpose of coming here, especially on to promote the Cadet entrance exam for the information of the city constituents of Mati.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. To our guests, you may now come to the session floor. To Cadet Ensel Belloria and Hazel Laurel, please. Pwede napod mo magbisaya if ever. Whatever language you feel comfortable with.
Good morning, sir's and ma'am's. I am Cadet 1st Class Belloria Ensel Elijah Putian and from Silang Paglaon Class of 2026. And I am from Mati City.
Good afternoon, sir and ma'am. The Cadet is Cadet 1st Class Laurel Hazel Ann Margallo from, also from Silang Paglaon Class of 2026, from Batubatos and Isidro Davo Oriental, sir and ma'am. So we are here, sir and ma'am, to express our gratitude. Lalo lang nasa LGU sa Atuang Province and sa Mati. Dahil in the Region 11, duhala ang testing center and luckily and very unfortunately, belong ang Mati City dito sa Duha ka testing center, which paved the way for us. Unum mediriya karun na magproctor sa mga incoming PNPA cadets. Pero daghan pag among mga kauban, nagigyan sa Mati inag-exam, natuwa karun na himong proctor sa Davo Region, sir. Pero maulag ito, this pathway help us in para mas dali na mo makabot or dali may nakapagpa-exam atong PNPA cap, sir and ma'am.
Good afternoon, sir and ma'am. And I would also like to thank siya't ang mga LGU, especially siya dito sa city because this has become na naging pathway na sa aming dreams mula kami sa sibilan pa. And also we want to share this opportunity sa mga gusto rin mag-apply, sir and ma'am. And hope this will be, ah, to, this will continue na ating maging program, sir. And that will be all po.
Thank you, again, madayaw na hapon. And thank you for your statements. So for now, the floor is now open for any discussion or questions or any additional statement na Atuang irilipod to our guests. Honorable Campos, you are now recognized.
First and foremost, nakuhomos pasalamat for coming here from our officials from Dopo. Kay PD Bukol na naederia, Satoang Deputy. Sir Carlito Apilat who is also here. Sa pag-uuban sa ato ang mga PNPA cadets na mag-proctor sa incoming exam. So for those watching online na gusto magpasok sa Academy, well, the upcoming exam is on November 9. So mga yun na lang punta o gamay details, ato ang mga cadets deria. Kung basina mo'y gamay details dala kung unsaon para maka-take o exam. Kin saang qualified, kailangan ba graduate ba o high school? Para sa mga nagtanaw online na gusto mag-join na medyo curious or asan nila makita, mag-apply ba? And kung kanusa ang exam, unsaang date o unsaang ilahang mga dalahon ni Anna na adlaw on November 9. Thank you.
So for our, sa mga gusto mag-apply, no? Basic qualification po is from 18 years old to 22 years old po and with no criminal records and with no parental obligation. And yun na naman po sa mga basic requirements po. And sa mga, actually siya ngayon po, tapos na po ang ating online na application. Sa mga di pa po nakapag-apply, meron po tayong walk-in application po this coming November 8 dun din sa Davo Oriental State University po. And magdalawa na po sila ng mga requirements like mga ID, IDs and virtual certificates po in case na gusto pa silang humabol, ma'am. And sa mga ano, benefits po sa pagiging PNP cadet, nandun na po 'yung 4-year scholarship na mag-apply for scholarship and and dun tayo sa Kabite, dun din ang Academy natin po. 4 years and meron tayong base pay na ano po, aabot na hanggang 35,000 po. Hangga'ba habang nag-aaral po po tayo sa Academy. And lahat po libre na habang nag-aaral po po tayo dun. And after po ng ating cadetship program, eh, di na po tayo mambo-blema ng maghahanap po po tayo ng mga kung saan tayo maassign kasi diretsyo na 'yan po trabaho wala na po kayong apply po po. And sa mga mag-e-exam ngayon po eh, i-message ko na din po na good luck po sa mga mag-e-exam ngayon Sunday. And magbasal lang ng instructions. Susundin lang 'yung mga instruction po and and that will be.
Thank you for that additional information, sir. May I also ask, and gipangutana po ni Consena, when is the exam? And where?
The exam is on November 9, Sunday at the Davo Oriental State University, ma'am. From mag-start na 'yung exam, ma'am, is 9:00 AM po. And i-encourage namin lahat ng mga examinees na pumutan as early as mga 7:00 po para mas maayos po ang ating examination sa examination date po.
Noted. Thank you for that additional info, sir. May we also cater the, any question coming from Honorable Antopwesto?
Good afternoon. I am Consell Antopwesto, sir. Ang ato PD, Colonel Bukol and the Deputy Director. And also sa atong mga cadete, ni Akarondry, from the Philippine Police Academy. Sir, taga matigud ka?
Yes, sir.
Matigud, from what barangay?
From Barangay Central, sir.
Barangay Central. So as curious lang po ako, 'yung nag-apply for PNP, nakapasa online? Yun lang, online lang sila?
May nag-apply online, sir. Before, na maagay kasi 'yung nag-start 'yung online application, sir. And nag-cut off na 'yung last month, sir. And may mga iba kasi, sir, na hindi na maka-apply online.
Ilan ba ang examinees natin from Mati?
From Mati City, sir, may online applicants, applicants na 'yan na 170, sir.
Ano ang passing rate ng examinees to pass the examination?
Ang passing rate po natin, sir, is medyo mataas, sir. Nasa 80%, sir.
80%?
Pero is kilukha kasi natin sa PNP, sir, is 'yung mga top talaga sa mga cream of the crop, mabaga, sir.
Okay. So after taking the examination and de-pass the examination, anong gagawin ng passers?
So after passing ng PNP admission test po, meron pa tayong mga Phase 2, which is the physical fitness test. Meron pa po tayong neurological examination test. And meron pa tayong medical, sir, and interview. Pagkatapos po ng ano.
So after passing the examination, not totally na they are considered now as aspirant or qualified being a student of the PNP. So de-pass another exam, oral examination or what you're interviewed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Dili ba particular, kay usahay magod natin nakita, usahay sa mga, sa PMA, sa PNP, during the time kung na-interview na, usahay nairason ka na bagsak sa because of the family background, they are from the broken family, they're ano, wala ba diha sa inyo ha?
Wala po, sir.
Wala sila. So kahit anong status ng pamilya nila, kung separated ba 'yung parents or pinaang anak ba siya sa gawas, dili includes 'yung anak.
Wala po, sir.
So wala ay discrimination. So encourage lang ang ilahal ang ikuwan na they are physically fit, mentally qualified during the examination, physically. How about the height?
About height, sir, ang minimum requirement sa height po is, sa male is 5 foot, 5'2". And sa female, sir, is 5 flat. And if ever, sir, mas mababa ka pa dun sa minimum requirements, meron na po tayong NCIP, sir.
Okay.
Mag-submit lang po tayo ng NCIP form, sir, na indicate na na you are member of the
NCIP, so may, iwi-wiyo 'yung height. May certification talan na NCIP na they are, they belong to the May certification talan na NCIP na they are, they belong to the INSA, indigenous people?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're talking about male and female. How about the LGBT? They are qualified to take the examination for the PNP or what, PNP? Wala bang discrimination dyan?
Walang discrimination about dyan, sir. Basta ang require lang po namin is
Yun lang, so wala sa requirement? Wala naman siguro 'yung i-interviewin dyan? Ay, talagang lalaki ka ba o babae ka ba? Wala naman? Okay. So that's, gusto ko lang klaruhin, kasi we are equal sensitive, equal gender na tayo ngayon. Kasi very viral issues yan na may mga police nagkakaroon ng relation with the policeman. Joke lang yan, pero I am sure, kasi may, 'yung LGBT, kasi mga matatalino, di ba? Magigiting sila na lalaki, pero sometimes they are afraid to, bakakutsain sila, di ba? So walang ganon sa PNP. So encourage natin ang LGBT to interview, ano, okay ba kayo?
All, all ano naman, sir?
Wala naman discrimination?
As long as interested ka mag-take sa exam, sir.
Mag-serve to the people?
Yes, sir.
Ah, dito tayo sa Consia, pag nakapasok ka na, may grade ba na i-maintain? Wala?
Yes, sir. May, ano tayo dun, sir, academics and tactics?
Tactics?
Yes, sir. So both yun, sir, kailangan po natin i-maintain.
Okay.
Sa academics.
So haya-haya ka, ayokong makasulod ka diha nga na PNP kay naakabi? Allowance 35,000 monthly?
Yes, sir. Excluding po dun 'yung mga incentive, mga benefits, sir.
So may cash allowance hanggang 30,000? May libre cloth allowance pa rin? Uniform, pagkain, dormitory? Nakabilt-in, nakahouse-in talaga kayo doon?
Yes, sir.
So very nice na makapasok sa, anong age limit? 18 to 20?
22, sir.
22? Hanggang dyan lang?
Yes.
Even 'yung mga professional na pwede silang mag-apply parin o hindi na?
May mga applicants din dati, sir, na in-service na, sir, nasa PO1 na sila, sir. May mga accountant na din, sir. Pero mas pinili nilang masapin pa, sir.
After graduation of PNP, anong pinakababang rango?
Police Lieutenant, sir.
Police Lieutenant ang pinakababang rango. So anong ilang taon, anong taon ka na sa PNP?
Four years na ako yun, sir.
Anong plano mo after your graduation? Mag-asawa?
Hindi pa, sir.
Okay. So that's all, and thank you for the information. So we will encourage the young people, the young students who are qualified to take, untrisado silang magpasok sa PNP. So thank you for the effort of the PNP. And we will assure that the support of this August body, ihatag na mo sa effort po niyo para mahimong successful ang atong pag-recruit. And the PNP will produce a well-rounded and law-abiding PNP in this country. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Honorable Anto Presto, for that statement. And thank you to our guests for being patient and answering all of our queries. And do you have any more statement? If none, maybe we can also invite in our session floor, our Provincial Director of Dopo, Police Colonel Richie Bukol. And together with Deputy Provincial Director, Police Lieutenant Colonel Carlito Apilat. Again, welcome here sa among session hall, sirs. And we are very honored na naggrace ninyo ang among session hall. So the floor is now open for you, basinaamoy gusto po di relay po na statement if ever.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So I would like to thank from the bottom of our heart, in behalf of the Philippine National Police Academy, for this opportunity to be invited here in this Sangguniang Pangloso session. And with our cadets here, mostly from Dava Oriental. And I hope that you will support us during this conduct of PNP exam for the Dava Oriental, to benefit the people of Dava Oriental. Thank you and good afternoon.
Thank you, Colonel. Any more statement? Okay na. And again, dagan-dagan salamat sa Atuang guests for gracing us this afternoon. And we are very honored and grateful for the opportunity na at least kani ang mahimo pong venue po dino to relay any information related to the PNP or any activities po dino. And rest assured, kami here in the Sangguniang, together with this August body and together with our Vice Mayor, Enzorabat Kanunayugdmi, na mahimo niyong partner sa tanan niyong activities. So that is definitely an assurance and a guarantee coming from this council po. Again, thank you for your time and effort. And here and to our examinis, God bless sa ilaha, tanan. And hopefully, we can encourage more of our young ones here in the, not only here in our city, but sa Tibuk Province or Dava Oriental. Mas ma-encourage pa nato na to also answer the call of service. Again, thank you for your service and your dedication. And maybe before munamo allowed mag-exit, sir, maybe we can request a few minutes na magphoto opportunity lang po. Thank you. Few minutes she says is hereby declared. Is hereby resumed. We are still under suspended house rules. May I request, Honorable Campos, for the lifting of the suspended house rules?
Madam Chair, I move for the house rules to be reinstated, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. So there is a motion by Honorable Campos for the lifting of the suspended house rules. Any members who second her motion? Si Kanda, Honorable Bardon, and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none? Suspended house rules are now lifted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Privilege or other force observations?
We are now under privilege. Are any member of this Ocos Council may now take the floor for any of their manifestation? Honorable Anto Presto, you are now recognized, followed by Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Secretary of the SP. And to my colleagues, I would like to, not a privilege speech, but a manifestation. I am not ready for the script, but when I talk with the Honorable Campos, I gathered some information. This is a wake-up call. Why na ang resort tugutan nila na magsulod ang mga guests without proper road right of way? That happened that si Consial Campos was, nagka-encounter o accidenting na hulog din. Thank you ta, simpatian ako na wala siya na unsa. Pero the property, ang ihang car was damaged. Ang akong pangutana, kinsa man andiha, asa ang public safety, asa ang atong engineering, why di allow to open that road into public? Even ako during September 8th, ni Agiko, is very dangerous. But in spite na ano sila instruction na ilahang ipag-slope, ipadawn pa nila, but wala sila ihihatag na mga warning devices na do not enter and this road is not passable. So our colleague Campos kumpiansa, I think, because believe siya kondisyon ang iyang sakyanan, di ba? Fortuneer, but unfortunately, nahitabong in ato. Pero kung naalang yun unta'y, mga standard procedure ba, nag-i-apply for public safety? First, the resort owner, because na sila issue sa road right of way. How come na nagpadayon sila sa pag-operate? Si Kand, kinsa man ang engineer, nag-i-tas niya ng resort? I think Engineer Silva. I heard Engineer Silva, I don't know how true na si Engineer Silva ang usaka contracting engineer ang resort. Pero nga, nung napabayaan ang mga early warning, for the safety of our people. And this is also not only for that resort. I think this is now the wake-up call. We will call all the resort owner. Kung ato i-check, kung na ba sila 'yung mga bantay dagat, bantay lifeguard? Na ba sila 'yung mga lifeguard? Kahit dito sa Karasada man, I think sa, siguro wala na to na makita. So this is my manifestation. I am magpasalamat na punta nga way nahitabong yun sa kinabuhis atong kaubanan, but dili na lim. Dili na lim, kasabot ko siyang ibati, pero wala man siya na taranta, nakabityo pa man po siya. Pero kung na taranta po siya, siguro nalata po siya, di ba? Wala lang siya na tarantar kay isumpo siya, pero kung kami siguro to ni Consulir Pabio, amot lang kung nakaginhawa pa me. No? Sa pagtuyok, sa pagtumbling, pagkahulog na lang dyan, wala na, di ba? Pero nakapatman ako siyang i-congratulate for the second life or ato na lang i-pray na magtarong ang Atuang mga hingtungdang ahinsya sa lokal na panggamhanan for the safety sa Atuang mga guests. This is a bad image kay mag-viral siya, asa nahitabong sa usaka resort. Sumadao po ang atong industriya sa turismo ni ini tungo kay wala tay pakabana sa mga safety, especially sa entrance, sa exit, sa safety, especially kana ang resort. So I think I request the engineering on the management of that resort na ato pangutan on, kung saan nahitabong. Kaya kunyagi mapuku diha, vertigong taasa. Unya kay ilahan ang giutro, how come nag-i-allow pa nila na gamitin sa publiko? Kana lang ang akong pangutana, usaka manifestation, nga sana all, sa sunod, mag-ingat po yun ta. Pero sao manato, ang kumpiansa? So for the second life, my manifestation or my sympathy sa atong colleague, sina Campos, kalag-kalag para bigyan to Cons, no? Sunod kalag-kalag, doa una po dun ta, katosin ba ko, no? Pero pinangga di po ka sa gino po. Thank you lang, o kana lang yun, ang akong seriyoso na manifesto, mu-action ang Atuang mga hingtungdang ahinsya po the public safety, especially the engineer who constructed that area. Nganong iha na gialaw, napagian. Kung yun sa nga, wak manamuna, gisugo, siya siya medyo na mugo, siya wala niyo gih, totally close. Dapat gih-close, anong open man, wala nakasulod man ang ihang, meaning gipabayaan nila. So that's the negligence of duty and the responsibility ano ang Atuang beach owner and of course, ang Atuang engineering, nganong nag-ingun, ano yun ang sitwasyon. Sana din na mangyari sa sunod, di ba? So that's my manifestation, and thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Anto Presto, for that manifestation. We are very grateful and thankful na at least our colleague, okay raje hapon. And tama tong giinun ni Honorable Anto Presto, this is also an eye-opener for us. Especially the city of Mati is considered as a tourist destination. So definitely, because of what happened, it will also makita po nato ang mga gaps po, ang kakulangan. And maybe because of the incident, maybe ang Atuang mga resort owners or mga tourist na mga tourism focused na mga spot can be more, ano ang ilahang mga roads and ilahang mga buildings. And because of what happened, maybe we can also request ang Atuang Committee Chairpersons on Infrastructure, Honorable Pabio. And also jointly, together with Committee on Tourism, ay Honorable Pang, na we can check and see to it na conducive po ang Atuang mga resorts to cater ang Atuang mga guests and safe po ang Atuang mga guests. So we are still under privilege. Are any more manifestation, Honorable Pabio, you are now recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all. And thank you so much sa chocolate from God Conseiler, Cons Paulo Robat, from Japan with love.
Arigatex.
Honorable Presiding Officer, we have Communication Number 150 in our order of business today. Not certified urgent by local Chief Executive, but I ask help and permission to my colleague. This communication will be tackled during committee as whole under an assigned business, suspended house rules, for discussion and favorable approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Pabio. Please take note, Mr. Secretary, that Communication Number 150 be tackled and discussed under unassigned business under suspended house rules.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
Any more manifestation, Honorable Pang, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to all. This representation as a Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget, Appropriation Ways and Means, I would like to respectfully request to this August body for the following communications. First, Communication 148, 2025, regarding SK annual budget of barangay Cabo Aya for calendar year 2025. Second, Communication 149, 2025, annual budget of barangay Matiao for calendar year 2025. And supplemental budget number two of barangay Don Salvador Lopez. Third, Communication 153, 2025, a letter from the local Chief Executive, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, dated October 28, 2025, addressed to the Honorable Sangguniang Pangloso Members, through Honorable Lorenzo Leon G. Rabat, City Vice Mayor, requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, City Mayor, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Provincial Government of Cotabato, represented by Vice Governor Rochella Marie T. Taray, for the purpose of extending financial assistance to the city of Mati in the amount of 250,000 pesos. Fourth, Communication 154, 2025, requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, City Mayor, to enter into a contract agreement with ENJ Pulyan Estate Lesser, represented by Ms. Joan Pulyan, for the purpose of providing space rental for the City Housing and Resettlement Division. Fifth, Communication 155, 2025, requesting for a passage of a two-separate resolution authorizing the enrollment of the City Government personnel in the respective institutional programs intended to enhance financial management, compliance, and digital governance system of the city of Mati. Madam Chair, I would like to request that this communication be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. Please take note of the manifestation and the request of Honorable Pang, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
Any member who wish to avail of our privilege are? If none, please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
For proposed ordinance for first reading, we have one proposed measure, Madam Chair, authored by Honorable Roelio Pabio. Proposed city ordinance number 655, series of 2025, an ordinance regulating and monitoring the installation and maintenance of wires, cables, foreign attachments and important structures and assemblies of public utilities within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Mati and provide penalties for violation thereof, referred to Chairman Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure, the Honorable Pabio. No proposed resolution for first reading for communication messages, communication number 148. This pertains to Sangguniang Kabataan annual budget of Barangay Cabo Aya calendar year 2025 as manifested by the Chairman Committee on Finance to be discussed under assigned business suspended house rules. Same with communication number 149, referred to the Honorable Pang, Chairman Committee on Finance to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules pertaining to annual budget of Barangay Matiau for calendar year 2025 and supplemental budget number zero to Barangay Don Salvador Lopez. Communication number 150, series 2025, referred to the Honorable Pabio, Chairman Committee on Health. This pertains to the letter of our local chief executive, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, requesting the Honorable SP members for a passage of a resolution authorizing Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, our city mayor to enter into a memorandum agreement between the city government of Mati and the Department of Health, DAVO Center for Health Development under the good practices in health, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication number 151, series 2025, letter from Mr. Brian Cudilia. Subject filing of motion for reconsideration of administrative case number zero four, series 2024, referred to the Honorable Antupesto, Committee Chairman on Good Government. Communication number 152, series 2025, this is for the information of the Honorable SP members. This pertains to the letter from the Sangguniang Pandalawiga Secretary of Dava Oriental, addressed to the Honorable Members Sangguniang Pang lungsod pertaining to resolution number 18-164-10-2025 entitled, "A Resolution Declaring Appropriation Ordinance Number Zero Three, Series of 2025 of the City of Mati, Dava Oriental, Operative in Its entirety, Subject to Some Conditions." Communication number 153, series 2025, referred to the Honorable Edmundo Pang Jr., Committee Chairman on Finance. This pertains to the letter from our city mayor, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, requesting the Sangguniang Pang lungsod for a passage of a resolution authorizing Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, City Mayor to enter into a memorandum agreement with the provincial government of Cotabato represented by Vice Governor, Acting Governor Rochella Marie Ella Taray for the purpose of extending financial assistance to the city government of Mati in the amount of 200,000, 250,000 pesos, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication number 154, series 2025, same referred to Chairman Committee on Finance, the Honorable Pang. This pertains to the letter of our local chief executive, Honorable Joel Mayo Almario, requesting the Honorable SP members for a passage of a resolution authorizing Honorable Joel Z. Almario, City Mayor to enter into a contract agreement with ENJ Pulian Estate Lessor represented by Ms. Joan Pulian for the purpose of providing space rental for the city housing and resettlement division, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication number 155, series 2025, referred to the Chairman Committee on Finance, the Honorable Pang. Letter from our local chief executive, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, requesting the Honorable SP members for a passage of two separate resolutions authorizing the enrollment of the following city government personnel in the respective institutional programs intended to enhance financial management compliance and digital governance system to the city of Mati, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. That's all for communications, Madam Chair. For committee report, we have one, committee report number 27 to be reported by the Chairman Committee on Barangay Affairs, the Honorable Daniel Makaubos.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Honorable Danny Makaubos, you may now have the floor for rendering committee report number 27.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good afternoon, ah, my colleagues, to each and everyone, please send good afternoon. Ah, I think everybody has a copy of the committee report, ah, number 27, series of 2025. If there is no discussion, queries, ah, this representation, I would like to move for a passage and render committee report number 27, series of 2025, I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Makaubos, so there is a motion by Honorable Makaubos for the adoption of committee report number 27. Any members to second this motion, si candid by Honorable Dayang Hirang and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none. Committee report number 27 filed by the Committee on Barangay Affairs is hereby adopted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For calendar business, office business, business for the day for second reading, no proposed measure on resolution, we have one proposed measure under ordinance, city ordinance number 654, series of 2025, by the Honorable Makaubos.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Honorable Makaubos, you may now have the floor.
Okay, this is a product of the committee report number 27, series of 2025. Considering that this legislative measures is urgent and besides it is a committee sponsored measures, this representation would like to pass the city ordinance number 634, series of 2025, for second reading.
Thank you, Miss Honorable Makaubos, so there is a motion by the Honorable Makaubos for the adoption of city ordinance number 654, series of 2025, an ordinance amending Article 3, Section 6, 6.2, Capacity Development Component of the city ordinance number 629, series of 2025, for its second reading. Any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Valera and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, city ordinance number 654, series of 2025 is hereby adopted for its second reading.
With the permission of this honorable body, ah, this representation would like to pass this ordinance for its third and final reader reading under unassigned business on suspended house rules.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Honorable Makaubos, please take note of the request of Honorable Makaubos, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For unassigned business subject to suspension of house rules.
Thank you, we are now under unassigned business. For us, in order for us to cater all the communications, may I request Honorable Campos for the conversion of this august body?
Committee as well, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that the house rules be suspended and for this august body to be converted into committee of the whole, Madam Chair, I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Campos, so there is a motion by Honorable Campos for the conversion of this august body to a committee as a whole and at the same time for the suspension of the house rules. Any members to second her motion, si candid by Honorable Bardon and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, we are now converted into a committee as a whole and house rules are now suspended. Honorable Pabio, you are now recognized for communication 150.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, from proposed resolution, communication number 150, open for discussion.
The floor is now open for any discussions or queries pertaining to communication number 150, refer to the committee on health. If they are none, please proceed, Honorable Pabio.
I move for the adoption as committee as a whole recommendation, I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Pabio, so there is a motion by Honorable Pabio for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation, communication number 150. Any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Makaubos and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Honorable Pang, you are now recognized for communication 148, 149, 153, 154, and 155.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The floor is now open for the discussion of communication number 148, 149, all series of 2025, all barangay and SK annual budget, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so the floor is now open for any questions or discussions pertaining to communication number 148 and 149. If they are none, please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 148 and 149, series of 2025, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation, communication number 148 and 149. Any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Makaubos and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, um, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, the floor is now open for the discussion of communication number 153, 154, and 155, all series of 2025.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so the floor is now open for any questions or queries, discussions pertaining to ah, communication 153, 154, and 155. If they are none, please proceed, Honorable Pang.
I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication 153, 154, 155, series of 2025, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for communication 153, 154, and 155. Any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Dayang Hirang and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is carried. Please proceed, Mr. Secretary. May I request Honorable Campos for the conversion of this committee as a whole back to plenary.
Madam Chair, I move that this august body be converted back into plenary, Madam Chair, I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Campos, so there is a motion by Honorable Campos for the conversion of this committee as a whole back to plenary. Any members to second her motion, si candid by Honorable Pabio, any objections, discussions, hearing none, we are now under back to plenary. Honorable Pabio, you are now recognized.
Thank you again, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the passage of a resolution authorizing Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, City Mayor to enter into unsigned for in behalf of the city government of Mati, the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Health, DAVO Center for the health development under the good practices in the health entry entitled City of Mati Universal Healthcare Initiative, empowering the trade of survival through a pre-hospital emergency medical services program, I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Pabio, so there is a motion by Honorable Pabio for the passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Valera and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Honorable Pang, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I now move for a passage of a resolution declaring the annual budget for calendar year 2025 of the Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Cabo Aya, this city to be operative, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for the passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Bardon, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed, Honorable Pang.
I now move for a passage of a resolution declaring the annual budget for calendar year 2025 of Barangay Matiau, this city to be operative, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Bardon and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried, please proceed, Honorable Pang.
I now move for a passage of a resolution declaring the supplemental budget number two for calendar year 2025 of Barangay Don Salvador Lopez, this city to be operative, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Alcantara and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, to enter into and sign in behalf of the city government of Mati the memorandum of agreement with the provincial government of Cotabato for the purpose of extending financial assistance to the city government of Mati in the amount of 250,000 pesos, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Bardon and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Before Honorable Pang may continue, I would like to extend our pagpasasalamat to the province of Cotabato for the, for their, for extending financial assistance to the city of Mati in the amount of 250,000 pesos. Please proceed, Honorable Pang.
I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, to enter into and sign for and in behalf of the city government of Mati, the contract agreement with ENJ Pulian Estate Lessor for the purpose of providing space rental for the city housing and resettlement division, this city to be operative, ah, this city, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Dayang Hirang and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed.
I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the enrollment of the city government of Mati in the land bank of the Philippines, institutional internet banking, we access, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Dayang Hirang and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed, Honorable Pang, for the last resolution.
I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the enrollment of the city government of Mati in the field health electronic premium reporting system, I do so, I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang, so there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution that he just stated, any members to second his motion, si candid by Honorable Bardon and all members present, any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For, for third and final reading, Madam Chair, the measures authored by Honorable Makaubos, city ordinance number five, 654, series 2025, an ordinance amending Article 3, Creation of Community Development Fund and Implementing Guidelines, Section 6, 6.2, Capacity Development Component of the city ordinance number 629, series of 2025, an ordinance institutionalizing community-driven development approach in all local planning and program implementation in the city government of Mati, Dava Oriental, Creating Community-Driven Development Fund, Prescribing Utilization Guidelines Zero of and for other purposes. Proponent, Honorable Makaubos, for third and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable, thank you, Mr. Secretary, so there is a motion. May any members who wish to vote upon the ordinance as stated by our secretary, please raise your, raise your hand. Mrs. Secretary, please take note of all the members who voted for the said ordinance, city ordinance.
All members voted, Madam Chair, including the Honorable Alcantara.
Thank you, city ordinance number 654, series of 2025, an ordinance amending Article 3, Section 6, Capacity Development Component of city ordinance number 629, series of 2025, is hereby approved. Congratulations to the committee on barangay affairs and all of the proponents of the said city ordinance. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary? We are still under suspended house rules, may I request Honorable Campos for the lifting of the suspended house rules.
Madam Chair, I move for the house rules to be reinstated. Madam Chair, I move for the house rules to be reinstated, Madam Chair, I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. So there is a motion by Honorable Campos for the lifting of the suspended house rules. Any members to second her motion, seconded by Honorable Antupesto, any objections, discussions, hearing none, suspended house rules are now lifted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Announcement.
We are now under announcement, any members who wish to avail of this portion of a recession, Honorable Valera, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, and good afternoon, my colleagues, uh, partner and the government service. This representation as a member of the Committee on Agriculture would like to inform the whole composition of this committee. The members, Honorable Francisco G. Bardot Jr., and Honorable Raol M. Antupesto, Honorable Josipaulo Luis Alrabat, Honorable Edmundo Z. Pang Jr., that we, we will having a roundtable discussion tomorrow, November 5, uh, 2025, at 9 o'clock PM, at the Association Hall, uh, together with the key personnel of the City Agricultural Offices, Offices, Office, to discuss issues and concern relative to the upliftment of the farmers and picture book sector in the City of Mati. Thank you, uh, Honorable Presiding Officer, Babuhay.
Thank you, Honorable Valera. So please take note of all the members of the Committee on Agriculture. You will be having a roundtable discussion on November 5, 9 AM, as, tomorrow, as any, here in our Sanguniang Panglunsod Session Hall. Square table discussion. Any members who wish to avail of our announcement portion of our regular session? If they are none, again, gusto ako magpaabot sa akong pagpasalamat sa pasalubong na gehatagkanato sa ato ang Consihal, Cons. Jose Paulo Luis Razon Rabat, and welcome back. Arigatex. If wala na, what is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Adjournment followed by closing prayer by Honorable Alcantara.
Thank you, Mrs. Secretary. Honorable Alcantara, you are now recognized for the adjournment and the closing prayer.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I now move for the... I now move for the adjournment of this regular session, Madam Presiding Officer. I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Alcantara. Magdili man siyo kagusto mo humanda. So there is a motion by Honorable Alcantara for the adjournment of today's regular session. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Antupesto, any objections, discussions, hearing none, session is hereby adjourned.
Let us now pray. Ojabilaman na siyang tanan regime, bisilarak man na rahim. Alhamdulillah, herabil alamin, abrahmane rahim, maliki yom idin. Iya kaniabudu, iya kaniastain, idina serhat al mustaqim. Serhat al yinna en amtaa alaihim, gauril magdubya alaihim ulagdalin. Amin.